Okay.
That looks like a shorthand symbol of some sort.
Move back into session. And I would just indicate for the folks at home that we have just been in a budget review session for the board presenting the basics of the fiscal 2017 budget. And I will just say that it's a very responsible budget. All our expenses have been held in line and it reflects a total increase of just two-tenths of one percent, or how does Ron like to call it?
Seven-tenths.
Two-tenths of one percent increase, about $46,000. Some changes and cuts were made where they needed to be, some of which were somewhat painful. However, we were able to maintain our basic level of programs and not affect the quality of the education, I believe. So that budget will have more time for public review and will be voted on at the district annual meeting, which is February 9th, I believe. I should have that date memorized by now. Yes, February 9th, it will be proposed. Okay, so we'll move into the regular agenda. And we'll start with the clerk's report and the approval of our last meeting minutes, which was December 7th. Is there a motion?
I'll move the minutes to December 7th.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, Sean seconded. Okay. Are there any additions, corrections, or deletions?
Well, I believe Ruth was taking the minutes and I think Jamie wasn't there, listed Jamie as attending.
Was that the meeting that you took?
There was the meeting, the latter.
Okay.
Yeah. So it says in attendance, it had Jamie's name.
Oh, did I put Jamie down?
I think you did.
Oh, well.
You know.
Oh, odd, isn't it?
We're gonna stick.
Oh, you did that, okay.
Okay. Are there any other additions, deletions, or corrections? If not, all in favor of approving the December 7th minutes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstained.
Ricky?
I was abstaining.
Okay, we're all set there. Are there any communications? Anything else for the clerk's report? If not, we will recognize individual visitors. We have Mr. Merrill Barton visiting to keep an eye on Ruth and make sure he's on the straight and narrow.
Just to keep me warm on the way home.
Okay. Well, that's good work. Okay, consent agenda, is there a motion accordingly?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, if the move is seconded to go into consent agenda, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing no opposition or abstention, we will move into consent agenda and we will start with finance.
Finance committee met on Thursday, December 17th. And we approved warrant numbers 1091, 1093, 1094, 1095, 1096, 1097, and 1098 in the amount We also approved perils of November 13th of $434,34.4 and $4.00. And November 25th of $540,774.76. We also discussed the FY '17 budget development and we had a brief discussion on Act 46.
Okay, thank you. And our next meeting has now been scheduled for...
For the 13th, Wednesday, the 13th of January, at 8:00 AM.
Would you mind letting Barb know that?
Right, right.
Okay.
Hey, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure we voted on minutes. Because I started my conversation, I don't think we have voted on it.
Yeah, we didn't.
Oh, we did?
We did.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wish you had them. Where were you?
Sean stepped out. You just abstained from listening, not from voting.
So that nineteen for nineteen just means he was physically.
Warm breezes and...
Well, you had me there for a minute because you probably could have convinced me that we didn't vote on it. Okay. So that is the finance committee report. Russ is not here. I don't know if SESU finances met or if there's anything noteworthy. I know they've been...
We deferred the December 29th meeting because of the study committee needed that date, so nothing new.
Okay. All right. Planning and policy?
Has not met. We do still have some outstanding policies. With the disruption the holidays always cause, I want to actually review the changes we made before sending the final drafts to Barb. So when we get to old business, I'll just want to go over those quickly.
Okay. Thank you. Teacher curriculum has not met since our last meeting. BAMS also has not met since our last meeting.
So I would imagine that WRCC has also not met.
Has not met since our last meeting.
So I assume the committees will start to crank it up again here now that we're back to normal, so to speak. And the budget, at least at this point, is behind us, other than the big meeting. Okay, is there anything else for consent agenda? If not, is there a motion to approve consent?
I move to approve consent agenda.
Ruth?
Second.
Second. Ricky? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Seeing none, it's unanimous. And we move on to administrative reports. And we can... It's probably not fair, Michael, but we'll start with you.
Sure thing, thanks.
You've been... Even though you haven't been here all the time, you've been watching and following, I know.
I've been here for the last month.
Yeah, so it's been a month back now?
So, thanks, buddy. Over Christmas break, our culinary space has gotten a facelift and a makeover, thanks to our Green Biome Construction Company. And he installed a nice new composite floor over the tile and softened up the concrete block walls with some wallboard and new paint. So if you get a chance, stop in on Fridays when it's open, the restaurant, and check out the new look. It feels like a restaurant now. And that was our goal.
Friday is public service day, so to speak.
Public lunches, yep, from 11:30 until 1:20. Did a great job. Our fall program advisory meetings are wrapping up among WRCC teachers. And for WRCC and CTE teachers, they are required to hold two of these a year with their advisory board members. And the goal of these is to create the relationships with our area of businesses and eventually provide job opportunities for our students and co-op opportunities that will help our students be placed in a direction they would like to go. So we'll also be offering for our beginning of our outreach this spring, a new program, enrichment program on January 29th, which is a Friday. And it's going to be a middle school, after-school enrichment for grades 7, 8, and 9, so high school as well. And our construction teacher, Bob Simeon, is going to be holding this and to introduce the kids to woodworking and construction world. And it's our hope to have a teacher in each program area hold one of these every once a month continuously. I'm hoping it'll catch on. And also to give kids an opportunity to do something after school on a Friday evening as well. And to be part of a school system and be safe is another goal. This Friday, Dan Brayden, biomedical and science teacher, BOHS, will be presenting at New Hampshire Technical Institute in Concord, explaining the biomedical program. He was asked to share that information with all of the New Hampshire technical center directors. Are very curious of Project Lead the Way biomedical. So, and they're aware that we're the first ones in Vermont to combine with the high school and the career center to start the program. So pretty excited for Dan to be sharing that program. And that's it. And we're going to be starting our enrollment, not enrollment, recruiting with Ann Dorn here at Shorely for the incentive schools and our middle schools.
At time already, huh?
Yes. That's it, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lyman?
Yeah, hi, everyone. So I wanted to start with a staff announcement. I hired a new office clerk. We hired a new office clerk. Her name's Jill Kelly and she's, should be that new face there opposite Jen Minor in the main office at BAMS. So she started right before the break and we're excited to have her on. She's a local, she's born and raised in Braderboro, so excited to have her. Couple of things happened before the break. Every year we have this holiday shop and if any of you have had kids go through a school system, it's one of those things where people donate things, items that kids can then purchase to give to family or whatever by earning, like we call them BAMS bucks, those little bucks. And they earn them and then they cashman and purchase gifts for their kids. And Flo Levin heads that up, she does that every year, and converts a storage room into this nice little shop thing and kids kind of flood in there to buy things and it's really nice. So I wanted to recognize Flo and Don Petrofsky helped out and others. It was a nice, a nice thing to do. Right before the break, we did a thing called the PLP Day on that half-day, where the teams schedule their day to work on personalized learning plans. And we really focused and spent a lot of time on that. I'm hoping we tentatively scheduled, unless we change it to 25th, to do an informational session. And I'm hoping to have a teacher or two come and potentially a couple of kids to give you a little overview of what we're doing with PLPs at BAMS. So that morning on the 23rd, we spent a lot of time with that. You know, you can imagine the 23rd day before that big break, it's an interesting day with middle schoolers. A couple of other events that have happened recently. Our seventh grade, two seventh grade teams, every year they do a museum night, which is an interdisciplinary unit. Basically, social studies and English language arts kind of team up and they create these, they do ancient museum, they do ancient, they did Egypt this year. And they have all the parents come, the kids put together these big displays in the NPR and they show it like a museum. And there's a lot of research they do in the class and they got to cite all their sources and they do all the big displays. Well, this year the teams also opened up their classrooms and started down the road of student-led conferences. Essentially, what happened was parents were invited upstairs as well into those rooms and the kids showed on their Chromebooks, they showed their parents, their personalized learning plans. The teachers had given them a kind of a script and prepared them on how to show that. They not only showed their PLP, they showed Google Classroom and all of that stuff to the parents. And I was really, just really happy with what I saw. Parents really engaged in it, the kids are engaged in it. High percentage of kids show up to these things. So we are definitely moving in the direction of student-led conferences in the middle school as opposed to teacher-led conferences. Teachers are available, they're there, they talk to parents, but the kids kind of lead them through what they're doing. A lot of ownership with the kids coming there and what struck me, there was a parent who said, "I really probably wasn't going to go tonight and my child would not let me miss this." So, because they're showing them all their work. So I was really proud. This year it was Canis Major and Taurus that did that. Last year it was obviously Leo and Draco. So they rotate that museum night every year. But this student-led piece was a good twist for me. We have this, we have an alternative program for, and a lot of special ed kids in this program. But they paired up with this woman named Erin O'Keefe and they did circus yoga, they did a two-week unit with that. And these kids are, a lot of them are kids who are maybe been unsuccessful in school, have a hard time in school. And it was really, they did a circus routine and for two weeks they practiced and these kids were doing all kinds of little tricks and showing off some of their skills, throwing objects, balancing objects, that kind of stuff. And it was a real highlight for me to see some students who I have not seen very engaged in school at times, really proud of going through this two-week. And so at the end of it, the parents came in, family came in and they watched them do a, it was a good 45-minute presentation and went through a whole routine. And the kids were really excited to show off their skills. So Junie Pereira heads up that program, it's called the Polaris Program, but there were some other students that were involved. And it was really, really a highlight for me before the break. One final note, January 11th, which is coming up, our middle school leadership group is meeting with all the middle school leadership teams from ESU. We're going up to SIT and Ron, this is one of, something that Ron really heads up. They do, we do a summer leadership academy and then there's some periodic things during the school year. And so we're doing a follow-up up at SIT, January 11th. Diana Wally does a lot with that, if you know Diana. That's it for me. Any questions?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Perrin?
So it is our first day back from break and, you know, it's nice to have, there really is a sense of rejuvenation among the students. It was nice to see, and as I went in on the classroom today, it was nice to see students that were well-rested and getting ready for final exams, which are only two weeks away. It's hard to believe. Our finals are set for January 21st and 22nd. It's a little different this year because of the way the calendar worked with Martin Luther King with that holiday. We actually have two four-day weeks coming up. One of them is Martin Luther King Day. And then we're going to actually have our final exams the following week in order to make the semesters balance. So if it seems strange that we have two Mondays off in a row, there's a good reason for that. That was to preserve the teacher prep day between semesters. Otherwise, the teachers would have had a prep day, then had to come back and get final exams, and then start again. So we made that conscious decision when we built the calendar, so. Our Feed the Thousands campaign went very well. We did exceed our goal in terms of money and in terms of canned goods. And I can't say enough about Student Council. They really went around and they solicited people respectfully and really worked hard to raise awareness and they went to every advisory and asked for any donations. Along those same lines, English teacher Toby Moore and science teacher Mike Arbach are pretty accomplished musicians. And they, along with Steve Rice, set up at the entrance to the school, the two days before December break, and they took up a donation and they played Christmas carols for the entire school. So as people were coming in, they were, you know, enjoying the music, but also were actually raising quite a bit of money for Project Feed, so it was great to see. And so I'd like to acknowledge the work they did. You know, it was great for school spirit overall, but it was just a wonderful thing to do for Project Feed the Thousands. On that day before break, we tried something a little different. One of the things that happens for high school students and some middle school students is they begin to lose touch with the reason they read when they were younger. They begin to kind of lose their focus on why reading's important. So we did what on the surface seemed to be an interesting activity. We went back to advisory. We had 30 minutes where we actually had students bring in their favorite children's books. We actually took 30 minutes and kind of read and shared stories about those favorite children's books that they had read to when they were younger. And some of them were, you know, the classics like Good Night Moon, The Night Before Christmas, all, you know, all of those classics. And then other ones like Pigeon Feeds a Hot Dog, or Pigeon Finds a Hot Dog, The Pigeon Drives the Bus, some silly books. It was great to see, though, and overall it was very well-received. I know my advisory students, we had a great time. And I want to thank Lucy Johnson and Karen Trnowski for kind of spearheading that. It was a little offbeat, not quite as lavish as a lip dub, but it's a nice way to kind of launch into the December break. Also, I want to share something I got from Deputy Gaylord a few days ago, actually before break. On Wednesday, December 9th, a Braderboro bus was traveling towards Vernon on 142. And they came across a motor vehicle accident involving a car and a pedestrian. One of our students, Jemez Jobin, who has been through the Protective Services Program and is also in his fire rescue in his local community, asked the bus driver if he could render aid. And he did so. He asked the bus driver to call 911. He took the bus's first aid kit, rendered aid to the victim until other responders arrived. You know, Jemez could have just stayed on the bus with everybody else, but I just want to acknowledge what he did getting off the bus and rendering aid until first responders came. And the first responders reported that he did a wonderful job until they got there. Pedestrian's okay, minor injuries, you know, it was, as they said, scarier than, it looked worse than it was, which was great news. But I just want to commend Jemez for his, the leadership he took by making sure that everybody on the bus was safe. My understanding is he calmed a lot of people down. He told bystanders that stop to get various pieces of equipment and he really took a leadership role, and so I want to acknowledge that, that he did that. And, you know, I've met with him a couple of times to review that. It's just great that we have students that can step up like that, so important that we share that. Finally, I have copies of our latest newsletter. Went out, a lot of great information, things that are upcoming, a little bit about the fall plays, so you can read that at your leisure and enjoy it. And that's it, unless there are questions. Thank you.
Do we have anything else from Central Office?
I have Ron's left the article for, so that would be the budget, or it would be wording?
That'll come under new business.
Yeah, and maybe the Act 46 discussion, probably, is that all of this under other business?
Yeah.
It's unfinished, yeah.
Unfinished, yeah, first item, which is coming up. Okay. I don't have anything specific, so we can move on to unfinished business and Act 46 discussion comes up first. And I believe Ricky has some information for us.
Myself and Frank, yeah.
Yeah, and Ron's left a study committee report, so should I?
Yeah, you can go and pass those around.
Go ahead, go ahead.
So for everyone that does not know, myself and Ian are, two of the Braderboro representatives, we were asked by the Braderboro Town School Board to help be part of that. And we've been at these, doing these meetings pretty much weekly for a while now. And then there's been some subcommittee meetings as well. What's coming around right now is essentially the report, and I think some people may have seen this at some point or another, or drafts of this. And we are meeting later this week, the study committee's meeting on Thursday evening to kind of go through some finalizing things, I think. That's sort of the hope. Has everyone on the board seen this in some form before or not, or is this the first look for some of you?
I think it's the first look for us.
Okay, so first look for some of you. And the way that Act 46 was written is it gave some real specific things that we had to say that we were going to do, or some things that we were going to do, and some specific work plan to make that happen. And you've heard, and it was mentioned earlier tonight, like an accelerated merger plan. And the thing that I want to be really clear about, and I'm glad the camera's here to say this too, because I think there's been some confusion about that, is that there's the accelerated plan, there's sort of a standard merger, and then there's other things that we can do as well. The work that the study committee's been doing and the administration, and I have, I can't say enough about Ron and Frank and Lyle at Central Office and how much help they've been for this whole process and the work that they've done. But the work that we've done for, under the accelerated merger plan, even if we decide not to go with an accelerated merger, we would have to do all this work anyway. Because however we merge, we're going to have to figure out how to make this work. So for those of you that have seen parts of this before, there's some specific things that, this is the most updated version, and there's some questions related to that. So on this document that just came out, on page three of that document, halfway down, there's a thing called cost implications. One of the things that, a question that we've been getting a lot of, and I'm assuming, Frank, you did a lot of this to figure it out, is that the approximate reduction to costs would be about $100,000. And part of that comes from sharing school staff, some of the things that we talked about with our own budget review earlier, about the fact that we have to take from here to put it there, to move it there. If it's one district, there's less of that to do. And also because we've already consolidated special ed and we saw in the bottom of that first paragraph, you see about a $300,000 reduction in costs, cost reduction. So we know what that's kind of like. So we have an idea about that for the future. Next to that, under the homestead tax rate, Sean, even though he's not part of the committee, he came and did a great presentation to us last week and brought some stuff, and under Appendix A gives that information related to the homestead education tax rate related to how that works. So there's a chart on A, Appendix A in here for that. And then other things that Ron asked me to highlight, probably you need to highlight as well, Frank, you can stop me, please, if I'm just rambling too much. On page four, under Article 2, grades of operation, we cleaned up some of that language. Some of these things, these different pieces related to this are part of the work plan that came down from the state. And we just had to put some language in and reference some certain acts and things like that. So this, the grades in operation really cleans up mostly the language related to Vernon, because Vernon students will still have the ability to tuition out after sixth grade. And that was one of the things that, in the initial language for Act 46, said that couldn't happen or wasn't allowed to happen. And Vernon, and I think there was a couple of the communities in other parts of the state that had a similar agreement, and legislature went back and they reworked it and said, no, okay, we're not going to overturn past practice kinds of stuff and other laws and invalidate other things. So Vernon, so Article 2 cleans that up a little bit and Vernon will still be able to do what it's always done after sixth grade. On that same page, Article 4 is also some cleanup of language related to proposed new school construction and school operations. And then, and I know I'm going through the part of this really fast, but I just wanted to highlight some of the changes for people that have heard or seen some things. On page six, there's the Unified School District Board Representation. One of the things that we will have to do in this new, in a new merged school district is we will have to have a new board of directors. And trying to figure out how that representation came out. The Act says that you can't have any more than 18 members. Some of us remember what this board was like when it was 17 members and really felt that that was really not someplace we wanted to go back to. So we looked at a variety of different options, talked to some legal consultation, things like that, and basically we're in the area of nine. And there's essentially two ways that we can do nine. The first one on this chart on page six basically does what we do here, in that it'd be, and it's all based on population in the towns. So there'd be five representatives from Braderboro, then one E... So there'd be five representatives from Brattleboro, then one each from Dummersden, Guilford, Putney, and Vernon, and everybody's vote is the same. And all nine people have the same power and same vote. Another way that we could do it is a weighted system, but based on the way the numbers are in the population is, it would change how much weight certain votes have, but it won't, wouldn't change the number of wake-up to the board. And one of the things that we really looked at was giving the four outlying towns more representation. We didn't want it to be Brattleboro and, oh yeah, these other people that are kind of hanging on. We wanted to have it be, and there's no way to legally do that without, because of the way the statute reads as far as the number of representatives based on the population of the towns. So there'll be, we're proposing a nine-member board, and one of the things that we're going to decide on Thursday is whether or not we go with the first chart or the second chart with the weighted voting.
First chart, they're essentially the same.
They are essentially the same, but tech, but there's some, but somebody's, if we go with the second chart, somebody's going to have to do math every single time.
Every time you have a vote.
Every time there's a vote, someone's going to have to do some math. So there's that. On the next page on seven, oh, sorry, yes.
This says the term of office of directors elected at March 1st, 2016. Election shall be 1, 2, 3, I think that should be 2017. Because if accelerated merger, merger is going to be voted, it will be voted on March 1st, 2016, so the directors will actually be elected, I believe, in the following year, wouldn't it, or not?
No, it's a good point, but no, it anticipates that the new entity will need a board of directors for at least a year in advance to make the transition planning. And they, and the statute doesn't want to create an entity without a governing board. So this is, this is correct the way it is.
But there would almost be two things would have to be answered at the same time, because the people that are voting on, if it comes to March, March 1st.
Yeah.
So you'll be voting, would you vote for an accelerated path on Act 46? And then you would have the actual individuals that are going to be running for those positions?
Yeah, and it would, so basically the ballot would say something along the lines of, do you want to do this? If you do, who would you vote for to represent you on this new?
At this, at the same time. Would they convene, it wouldn't convene until, excuse me, 2017?
That's right, July of 2017 is the operational date for the new entity, but it will take a substantial amount of planning and transition work to run that organization in terms of all the assets that have to be transferred, all the employee, you know, benefits and contracts. You're starting a brand-new entity, and that will take a great deal of work.
But the existing school boards would have governance until June, July 1st, 2017?
Yes.
Right, and then this new, newly elected board, the newly elected board would basically, would only be doing governance over the things for the structure that would take place as of, of July 1st, 17.
So they would be working.
Yeah.
After they got elected. Would they be getting paid also? So you have two people doing the.
Yeah, potentially.
But I hadn't really noticed or thought about that. Wouldn't that mean that anybody that wanted to run for this board would need to be getting?
They've got to be getting petition signatures and, and, I don't know, town parks even have petitions for these positions.
It's, yeah, it'd be coming up fast.
Yeah, I don't think that, I mean, all five towns would have to then have, Brattleboro would have to have five, and all the outlying towns would have to have one individual that would be voted on, on the same Australian ballot issue. And that would mean that everybody would have to get the petitions in, I believe.
By the 25th, the 25th of January.
January, yeah.
So those people would have to make that decision in all those towns.
And nobody even knows that that's there yet.
Right.
Is there any way to tweak that, I wonder? Because it would almost make sense not to have the individual electors, directors elected on the same day that the proposal may pass or it may fail.
For one thing, that would color, that could color that vote.
Couldn't you have a special election at a later date?
And we've, and I know that we've, at the study committee level, we have talked about the fact that if we don't meet all of the milestones to get for the accelerated path, we're going to have to have some sort of, some sort of special election if we go with one of the non-accelerated routes.
Because a special election could occur on a primary day, because people are going to be coming to vote the primary anyway.
Anyway.
And they could be, then you could have the directors on the ballot on that day, not on March 1st.
Right.
I think that'd be preferable, really.
No, I understand that there are a number of folks that are thinking this through and sharing the same concern about the timeline being seemingly just too quick. So I think it's definitely going to be a topic at the legislature, probably was today, you know, their opening session. So there's a possibility that that timeline will be extended. And then the other option that I would assume the study committee will, will talk about at the next meeting is, is March town meeting too early? Should we have an April or maybe a May meeting? And it would have to be a special meeting. But I don't think we can separate the vote to create the entity from electing the board. I think Ron has looked into that, and the answer is.
But it would, I mean, as Ruth pointed out, you'd have to have the petition hang by the 25th of January.
Unless this was pushed.
Unless it was pushed back, right, yeah.
As it stands right now, it's part of the DSA 706. It says the elected directors shall be sworn in and assume the duties, so that will require legislative action immediately, or fairly soon in any case.
So what happens if like Putney and Dummersden don't do the accelerated?
It's dead.
Oh, it's got to be uniform, it's got to be unanimous?
It does, by the towns.
By the towns. So then we'd still be board members?
Yeah, until next year, it would be the conventional path would have to be voted on.
Right, yeah.
So something is going to happen, but whether it happens this year in the accelerated path or next year in the conventional path, or in the third year, and I never remember the preferred or something.
Yeah, alternative.
Alternative.
And while we're on that topic, just, just real quickly, I don't want to distract us, but, but that is Appendix A. Is that what we called Sean's?
Yes, Sean's thing is Appendix A.
Which is the next page, after page seven. What's at stake, and the reason why there's, not the reason, but one reason why there's so much effort going into complying with the timeline is, is that 991,000 that Sean has identified as the, the impact that's lost if, if these communities don't consider this and, you know, and Michael, as you just said, you know, if one town opts out, this is what's lost, the 991,000 in tax reductions that are coming through the first year of an accelerated. That, that just goes away. There's no, they're not saying you get a second try at this point. It's just.
If I could, I'd like to speak to that if I could. What I did was I called the Agency of Education, and I got information about all five towns, and it's called the Preliminary Education Grand List. And it gives the amount of homestead education grand list right at the top. And that's where I got all of those numbers. So Putney, Dummersden, Guilford, Vernon, and Brattleboro, I got those numbers from this page, which was developed by the Agency of Education. And so what I did was I froze those numbers. You'll notice that those numbers don't change for five years. Well, obviously those numbers do change, but, because the grand list is not a static thing. But I figured, nobody's going to know how it's, it's probably going to go up, but there's no way to project what the increase would be. So what I did was I froze the 2015 homestead education grand list for five years, and then I did the multiplication, multiplication, excuse me, times 10 cents the first year, eight cents the second year, six, or two. And so that would be a declining incentive over a five-year period. So the number in the extreme right-hand column is a collective total savings in the five towns. So that 991,000, just shy of $1 million, would be what the 10-cent incentive would represent in the first year, and subsequently the 793, 594, down to the bottom. So if the, all five towns do vote in affirmative for the accelerated path, the collective reduction in taxes for homestead owners would be $2,973,802. So I thought it was a different way to look at the potential savings that would come to the district. Which, you know, is, that's a pretty substantial amount of money. And that actually, that money gets returned to the property owners because it comes right up the homestead education tax. So as an example, Guilford, or, yeah, I'll go to Guilford, because that's my town. Of course, it is the last page here. Our tax rate for 2015 was 1.8175. So if you had a 10-cent reduction in the incentive, and if it had occurred in 2015, then our tax rate would have been 1.7175. So this sheet actually shows the amount of money that was cut to the state from the town of Guilford, and this is for 2015. So that savings, actually, you could see what the savings would have represented for Guilford. It would have been $126,613.55 if that 10-cent had been last year. So it goes all the way down through, and then the bottom line is the, just shy of $3 million savings on its own.
So if you extrapolate that savings throughout the state, where's, the state is losing a lot of money.
Yeah, that's a good point, but.
Where are they going to get it?
But there's very few supervisory unions that are organized the way we are, where there, there isn't the typical scenario, which is all around us. If you go to Wyndham Central, you go to Wyndham Southwest, you go to Wyndham Northeast, the, the normal convention, the more typical convention is that you have several towns that have, that are organized around school choice, and they're simply not a member of a union school. They, they do not have access to this. So the vast majority of the state does not have access to this accelerated option. Unless, of course, you take a town like Dover, Wordsboro, and Marlborough, and they just say, yeah, we're, we're not going to have choice anymore, we're just going to sign up for the union system, no choice K-12. The probability of that is very low. So the point is, is that's where they, there's only a few supervisory unions like Brattleboro that are configured in a way that can access this. So there's no.
So it's only like a little, it's only going to affect like three or four?
Well, I don't know if it's three or four, but it's, it's certainly not, there's 62 supervisory unions in the state, and it's not going to be 60.
So it's not, so the legislation actually only pinpoints very small, not much.
That's my impression.
Yeah, so there's much to do about nothing.
And basically, to extrapolate your point a little bit, what we're doing, I mean, we're not, we're not saving any money. Well, we'll maybe save $100,000, which is an actual budget decrease.
Yeah, we're, we're reducing tax life.
Yeah, but this 991,000 that we've seen in the first year, basically, we're just taking income tax money from smaller areas that don't have union schools and bringing it here, essentially.
Take it out of this pocket and you put it in this one.
Except, except that's what has been happening ever since Act 60 was passed. So what you have in the state of Vermont is areas of relative wealth. If you go to Chittenden County, if you go to Norwich, if you go to Woodstock, there are definitely areas in this state that have extreme wealth. And Act 60, if you remember, the whole Gold Town and all the ski centers, it was, it was an attempt to level the burden of taxpayers statewide. So in a way, this is a continuation of leveling that burden. And as we all know, there are, there are areas of Wyndham County that could definitely benefit from a million-dollar relief on their taxes next year. There are individuals, there are families that are struggling. You know, I did the math for my house. I had a $200,000, this is my house, as assessed by the town. And I did it over a five-year period, and it would save my wife and myself $500 in five years. You know, that's not a tremendous amount of money, but if you multiply that times the number of people that own property, it actually is quite a bit of money. And it's, you know, if you have $500 extra dollars to spend in a five-year period, you know, it's, it helps. The tax burden is, it's, it's difficult for a lot.
But for that $500, you're going to give up your, your, your school board, your, your school autonomy?
No, I don't think you will at all.
A hundred dollars a year.
I don't think you will at all, Ruth.
Oh, you will.
You're still going to have advisory council?
The advisory council doesn't have any more teeth than a two-day-old baby.
We probably shouldn't have.
Well, that's a different conversation, but, but also the last few pages of this document that came around are from stuff that Frank did based on a calculator from, that came from the Department of Education, related to how to do this. So the first page, that actually says Appendix A on the top, that, that's this way. There's some assumptions that needed to be plugged in and some expected in, to it. And then the next few pages breaks it down by town and with the different, with the, the five-year model is the accelerated model, the four-year model is the conventional model. Am I have that right, Frank?
That's right.
Yeah, so if you look at the, that next page, for instance, it starts with Brattleboro alphabetically, and so it has like, if you do nothing, the five-year model is the accelerated, and the four-year model is the conventional. And then it moves its way through each town, so you can look at. And the 300,000 is based on if your property is assessed at $300,000. So that assumption was just put into the calculator. And for us at the, at the, the Act 46 Committee, Frank, a couple different times played with it in real time with us and changed some of those numbers and some of those assumptions to give us, to show what the calculation would be. So this just gives you an idea of what that would look like based on your specific town or what's happening for you.
Does this tax stuff, does this, what does a renter do? How does a renter?
The renter is subject to income sensitivity, like any, anyone else, may or may not be, depending on their income. So the same principle applies to income sensitivity, where the percentage of income that is subject to a school property tax, or the equivalent burden, is dependent on the spending per student that a school board passes. So from that point of view, the, the benefit of, of a stable in or a lower cost per student is going to be shared by the folks that are subject to income sensitivity. As far as the, the renter in a property tax, as you know, the landlord is going to be the one that, who owns the building is going to be the one that's paying the property tax. So again, their, their interest is, is associated with what Ricky's pointing out on that page, where the state has built in essentially both incentives and penalties for, for either going to the accelerated or conventional model or. for, for either going to the accelerated or conventional model or doing nothing. And that's what that first set of data illustrates, is that if, if we do nothing in Bradenborough, we, we start out where we, we are, $1.64, that's that very first line under homestead tax rate. And next year, the projection would be based on those variables that, that are on the prior page, the assumptions around student growth and spending change would be $1.74 and then it would be $1.84, you see those, and then $1.94. That's the do-nothing scenario, which builds in the, the penalties that, that say, oh, you're, okay, we're not, we're not moving.
Say I'm renting a property, is my landlord gonna lower my rent by 10 cents?
I, I wouldn't be able to answer, I couldn't speak for a man.
This is a graph for people who own renting property, it's-
Actually, I think that the rental property, if it was a rental property, would be a non-residential.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be, it wouldn't fall under because the only thing that the incentive falls under is the homestead education tax, not the non-res education tax. So business wouldn't be, it wouldn't be applicable.
So a rental is considered business?
If you own a property, you rent it, yes, then it would, it would, it would be, I believe-
Unless, unless, unless the landlord lived there.
Right.
If it was like a multi-unit apartment building and the landlord lived in one of the apartments, that would be considered homestead. But if they owned multiple apartments in the bill, in multiple buildings in a town-
I think the value on this would be listed on the non-res.
But there's two levels of impact. One is the incentive, which is this 10-cent thing that's just, just specifically, as Shaun has illustrated, a, a direct impact on the homestead tax rate. And then there's the general tax rate associated with a school district that all property owners pay, that the non-resident is not affected by the 10-cent credit, but the, but everybody's affected by the total, you know, cost per student in the general tax rate that's, gets set. And to what extent a property owner's gonna share that with a tenant, I, I couldn't speak to that. That's not funny.
But they do get a renter rebate if they fall under a low income.
They do, yes.
Money aside, and, and I agree, money is important. But I, I think sometimes we, particularly in this group, may be looking at this through the lens of an organization that already does a lot of this and is realizing the benefits. And special education is a good example of that. The organization that works well together and provides plenty of opportunity for all students in the supervisory union. But that's not the way it is in a lot of areas in the state. And there are, I, I constantly try to remind myself to look at this whole project through the opportunity for students that this, this can present. And some savings, sure, you could debate how much, how much efficiency is gonna be gained. But in, in a lot of places, it's gonna provide, I think, some opportunity for students. So that's not to take away from your argument.
No, I think it's an excellent point. I think it's probably more important, and I said this actually at the last study committee meeting, even though I did that spreadsheet, I think there are educational equity issues that are gonna be more important than the money. And, you know, that, that's really why we have these great administrators and this great school, so. All right, so I agree with you 100%.
Okay, are there any other questions on that for those of us that have been doing this?
Nah, you know, I just think that the person's elected in March, whoever they may be, it would make sense if they just would take right over, but.
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, and it's gonna, whenever we do this consolidation thing, I think it's gonna, for, for school board members, it's going to change. If anybody's currently on a school board, it's when, if you become, if you decide to become a school member on this new consolidated board, what you do now is going to look different than what you're gonna be doing then. Just it's going to have to be, I mean. I've, I've learned a lot about the K-6 system in Bradenborough doing this process. That I, I made, I, I made some assumptions which were wrong. And there were some things that, I've, I've learned a lot along the way just from being at the table with other people that are, that, that, that's where their focus is, where our focus up here is the 7 through 12, so.
Though it appears it would be less of a leap for people from this board-
Right.
-who are already in a cohesive, uh, regional board-
Consolidated kind of process, yeah.
-for someone from a local school.
Yep.
Well, we are an example of how it can work. Okay, to be continued. All right, policy review revisions.
Yeah, I just wanted to just go through those really quickly once again. Like I said, it was a fairly disruptive holiday season. And I had basically two questions to ask everyone's collective memory on these as we went through them. I only had two revisions that we made. On the student code of conduct, we took out the definition section and we made a change to student medicate, education?
Medication.
To student medication. They actually made the policy require that the school nurse be involved in prescription meds. The wording I had in my notes, and I, and this is, the first question is, is this wording correct? Because this was actively discussed, and I want to make sure that the final one that I thought I had was correct. Under implementation in Section 2, medication must be brought to school in a container labeled by the pharmacy or physician and stored in a secure locked place, and we added, "as directed by the school nurse or designated." Does that sound correct?
Yep. Yeah, as we talked about, yep.
Because we had talked about doing something with the first part too.
Right.
We started on that one. And my second question is, am I forgetting anything other than those two revisions?
Not that I remember, I don't remember about anybody else, but I don't remember anything else other than those two things for those.
I thought that was everything, but my confidence level wasn't there, so I want to review it one more time before I send the final draft.
Okay, so we will get a chance to read it because it has been quite a long time since those of us that aren't on the policy committee have discussed it. And will we be able to do that in time for warning for the 25th?
Absolutely.
Okay, which-
I have my list up.
About to come up for discussion is our next meeting date. Everybody's looking at me funny when I say the 25th. Okay, yeah, so we can get those behind us and move on to the next group. Anything else for unfinished business? Then we move on to new business, and we have some new business. And the first item is the board acceptance of the FY17 proposed budget. And we need to vote on that. And would somebody care to make a motion so we can get it on the floor that we approve?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah?
I move acceptance of the proposed 2016, 2017 budget in a total amount of $27,983,000.
Second. Okay.
Can you register second?
Mike. That being the expenditure budget.
Correct.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Questions, last chance?
I have just one thing. Uh, first of, 0.2% is fantastic. I mean, that's a, that is a great budget. But I can't help but, but feel when I see something that is that close, I can't help but look at it and think, really? You couldn't find another 0.2%?
Just cut out subcode or object code 500, you'd be there.
65 grand in a $28 million budget, we couldn't do that?
But it's only 2/10ths of 1%, right? Not 0.2%. 2/10ths of 1%. Okay, well, point, point taken. I'm, I'm sure if we, if we force the issue is, you know, it's such a big number and 64,000 is such a small percentage of it that probably if many hours were spent combing through again and figuring out where we could reduce a few pencils, we might be able to do that. But it has been brought in at a point where it doesn't, uh, subject us to the penalty and we've definitely made, made some cuts and, uh...
And if you go back to, in the whole process, it's, everything's been shaved and shaved and reshaped to get where we are right now. I mean, when we first had the presentation by the principals, it was, you know, it's a little different. Even the last budget, I think it was 1217, had the date as 2017. So this is even, no, I, I think, I think we're already there.
With the capital plan, why did we elect to take the amount we did out of the capital reserve fund? And the amount that we did out of the actual budget?
Oh, you mean for the projects that we did this year?
Yeah, because we're only taking 50,000 out of the actual fund, right?
For 17, yeah, the proposed budget. We'd rather take none out, but as I talked about the tax rate and how close we were, we, we needed to draw that 50 in order to stay under the cost per student.
We're only $4,000 away, right, from the penalty? Or 5,000, yeah.
So that's, that's why the 50, and the, the other number is in the operating budget, the 137,500. I think we started out around 250,000 in the earlier drafts of this budget.
At 248,000 is all we had.
Yeah, so, so we went from there down to the 187, but couldn't fund that through the operations. Had, had to either cut more projects or take it out of the reserve.
And that 150,000 is, that we had tried to set aside every year. As I certainly, for my part, has not been forgotten because I believe in the so-called roof-and-boiler fund. But based on how the numbers panned out this year, we just really didn't feel like we could.
But Ian, is your question why we didn't take the whole 183,000 or whatever out of the reserve fund?
Or, or just another 65 grand to bring us even?
Because we're trying to build up the reserve fund for the, for the year, what is it?
Yeah, when we had that 300,000.
Or something where we have a $500,000, um, plan replacement.
Well, yeah, and as always, the reason I think it got the name Roof and Boiler Fund in its former lifetime was those are big items that all of a sudden you get a roof. A roof problem and/or a boiler problem that you haven't anticipated. But, yeah, I mean, I guess it, it could have been done that way. This was the way it was suggested to meet the, again, that threshold requirement and still maintain some in that fund.
Budgeting is always a balancing act, juggling.
Any other? Any other questions or comments? Are we ready for a vote?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor of moving the FY17 budget of $27,983,983,000? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Extentions? It's unanimous and it shall move forward to the annual meeting. On, once again, it's been very nice. So, annual meeting warning articles, uh, I think-
So we have a few, I think we have like five copies?
There is some changes from prior years in terms of a couple of articles being eliminated. So-
We can share a couple of them?
Oh, we can sh-
We can share.
We, we need to each sign more than one copy, is that how it goes?
Yeah, typically, we do run at least three copies, I think, so.
And are we going to assign who is gonna do this yet or do we do that in a subsequent meeting? You know, assign who is gonna make which motion?
Yeah, we can do that in subsequent meetings.
What are you gonna do?
We, we need to vote to approve, to warn the, these articles for the meeting so that they can be posted, so.
You don't want, you want signatures on any of these?
Well, after you vote to, uh-
I, I move approval of the warning for the Bradenborough Union High School District Number 6 Annual Meeting February 9th of 2016.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded, now we can discuss it. And I would like to just point out that, if you notice from last year, and where did I put that piece of paper? The ones that were, here we go. That we used to do one that related to approving borrowing of funds in anticipation of taxes. That is by statute and it's been reviewed with counsel, I believe, by Ron, you know, Frank. That is within the purview of the board, so that doesn't need to be in there. And the second one, the use of reserve funds is also under the purview of the board. So you may notice that those are missing from, from prior years.
And the one about the categorical grants and aid is no longer there.
Yes, except grants, that was eliminated article, was Article 9. The categorical, yes. So that's, that's again within our, within our purview and it'd be nothing.
Powers of the board, yeah.
It's in the statute.
It's under powers of the board.
Yeah, so the, the things look a little simpler this year. And you see the budget amount is in there, Article 7, and, uh-
Why does it say 1%?
Should we remember, in our information meeting, I mentioned it's gonna come back at you, so.
No, I don't remember that.
Oh, you don't remember that, okay. So, so Act 46 dictates that language right there. And, and then if you went to page four, spent a little time with the tax rate calculations, that, it, it is what it is. Last year was $1.97, oh, oh, that was cost per student, right?
Yes, 1% higher.
Instead of looking at a tax rate change, they're asking for the board to tell the public, what was the cost per student change? And that's the, that's the prescriptive format Act 46 says you will use as a school board to ask your voters for authorization to spend.
You could, I, I understand that, but could you, could you do any more explanation of the 27,983? Could you say which is, to, than higher than last year? Point? No?
No editing the steps.
Not, not in the article.
That's in the discussion.
That's part of the discussion that we had the night of the meeting.
Well, yeah.
Or someone asks it.
In the budget.
Yeah, well, that's what I, that's what I sit up front and go through. You know, here's the, the various, how the high school did and-
And it will be in the bottom line.
In the book with many tabs.
Yes.
I have a book with many tabs as well. Okay, so we need to vote to accept this list of articles?
Do we need to assign articles?
Well, that's what happened in a subsequent meeting. Who's gonna actually propose it? We'll do that probably on the 25th, yeah, we'd have to.
Yeah.
I think Ruth should do seven.
I can do it. One of the other.
Uh, well, that usually does fall on the, on the chair, but we could have a contest for it, a raffle. But for right now, let's just vote on whether or not we're gonna present this list of articles. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so it'll be the articles presented at the annual meeting with the, that budget amount in there. Okay.
How many do you need signed, Frank? How many do you need signed, Frank?
They all need to be signed.
Do we normally do all five?
I believe so.
We've done all of them, yeah.
They have to go to all the towns.
Oh, I see, original for each.
Look, look, this one.
So, we're all signing all of them?
Yes.
Honestly, if we don't sign above Woody's, we're okay, right?
Right.
I'll sign up there.
If you sign above mine, then you get to explain articles.
We'll just go left, so.
We took care of the board attendance review, thank you.
Everybody go left.
Yeah, I'm gonna pass this, if you would pass that on to Barb. She asked me to give it to you, so-
Okay.
I wouldn't lose it in my pile of paper.
Yeah.
Let's just take a minute to finish these signatures, I'm sure I've got everybody.
Hey, who came down with my line?
I'm sorry. All right, so we got five signatures, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right? There's five of us here, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5.
There's seven of us.
Did you get all of these, Pat?
No, I don't think we've had any of those.
Oh, we haven't gotten all the way around yet. Okay.
Okay, this one needs to go that way.
No.
Only four signatures there is missing.
Maybe you asked, I don't know.
He's got that really short signature, that's not fair.
I think that's-
Next year, they will-
I don't know why I didn't sign this.
We must have signed payroll checks at one time.
Okay, so this one-
I sent it down.
You sent it, Pat, I think you didn't do this one. You want that one?
Have you guys done this one?
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5. Okay, I've got two here that are complete.
How many you got, nine?
I guess seven on that one, that was complete.
That's three. Pat, that one, she could be completing her hand, in your left hand.
Everyone has to have seven, right?
Yes.
Those all have.
What's the minimum amount of signatures?
4, 5, 6, 7.
Five.
1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. Okay, there's five copies with seven signatures each, so I'm using my BOHS analog, and starting five six. Okay. I believe that takes care of new business. And is there anything else under new business? If not-
Mr. Chairman, I move we adjourn.
Okay, Newton seconded by Mike. All in favor?
Actually-
Aye.
I just wanted to point out that the one thing I said earlier wasn't taken the wrong way, when I was talking about the 65,000, I was mostly just giving you guys a hard time. It is a great budget.
Next meeting, before we make the final vote, next, two weeks from today is Martin Luther King Day, and so we normally move our meeting to the following Monday.
Oh, what, I'm sorry, excuse me, that date again?
The 25th.
The 25th.
Yeah, it would be the 25th instead of the 18th. That seems to happen every-
And can I just say, too, typically, because we're meeting late in January, and then we're meeting the second week of the annual meeting, we typically don't do a meeting on the first Monday of February.
That's, that's correct.
Which would be February 1st, so we won't do a meeting then either.
So, then are we gonna be, end up meeting during-
Vacation week.
During, when the carnival week?
Well, in many cases, if my memory serves me correctly, the BOHS annual meeting has been the only February-
Has been the only February meeting, it's been the 9th.
And I would propose that again, for that's-
About your study committee meeting.
Oh, yes. And the next, the next study committee meeting is this Thursday from 6:00 to 9:00 PM in Dummerston, so anybody-
6:00 to 9?
6:00 to 9.
Has that been warned?
It's supposed to have been warned, yes. They, everybody told us we needed three hours, because if we're gonna meet the acceleration deadline, things have to leave on Friday morning to head to the state.
Okay. Did we actually vote to adjourn?
We did, this is a post-adjournment discussion.
So, let's revote.
Okay, everybody in favor of adjourned, just to-
Aye.
Okay. Thank you.